I'd like to call the meeting to order on October 26, 2020. Please join Councilmember Campbell in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our city. In these times of uncertainty, COVID, national unrest, we know that you are in control and we seek your guidance as we go about our daily lives. Help us to understand the complex issues that face us every day and give us the courage to uphold our principles. May we continue to treat each other with civility and respect as we meet tonight and discuss various issues. May we be ever mindful of the effects of our decisions upon our city and upon our residents. We thank you, Father, for shielding our police officers this past week who were involved in a crisis situation. We ask that you surround and protect our firefighters and military and their families as they serve our city and our nation every day. We ask these things in thy holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Campbell, for those words. Our city clerk will now give information on how to participate in tonight's meeting.
While the Goodyear City Council meetings are open to the public, the occupancy has been reduced to implement social distancing. Seating is generally available on a first-come basis, but meeting attendees will be cycled in and out if necessary to allow for speakers to speak on certain agenda items. If you wish to speak during a regular meeting, please complete a speaker's card so that we may ensure you are in the room for that item. Face masks are required and must be worn when moving throughout the building. Our residents still have several ways to address the council. They may submit their questions and comments to publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. And during meetings, they can view the meeting using Facebook, YouTube, and the link from our agenda is using Granaicas. After the meetings are completed, they can also be viewed on YouTube. The public may always contact the mayor and council at any time by sending an email to gycouncil@goodyearaz.gov.
Thank you. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of Goodyear City Council. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
All right.
Taylor Earl.
As he comes up, let me say the council will listen to your comments and may take one of the following: respond to criticism, request the staff investigation report on the matter, request that the matter be scheduled on future agenda. You have three minutes to talk. The light will turn yellow and you have 20 seconds to speak. Before you speak, please identify yourself for the record, clearly stating your name and if you're a Goodyear resident.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Taylor Earl. Address 3101, North Central Avenue, Suite 1000. I am not a resident of Glendale, of Goodyear, although close. I am with the law firm of Earl and Curly. Normally, I'd be here presenting a zoning case, but tonight I wanted to come and just say thank you. As you may know, my father recently, Stephen Earl, recently and suddenly passed away. My father had been what I would call a mainstay in the zoning community for over 30 years. And during that time, he represented numerous cases here in the city of Goodyear. As a family, as his passing, we were, of course, heartbroken, but grateful for so much time we had together. Personally, I was grateful for so many years of practicing law together, ultimately becoming law partners. I consider one of the great honors of my life. My father was very proud of the work that he did in the city of Goodyear. He worked on wonderful projects and valuable collaborations in the city. His work to help build the community meant a lot to him throughout his life. But I recognize that none of that could have happened without the work of many individuals in Goodyear. So tonight, please let me just say thank you. First, thank you to the members of the city council, both past and present, for your engagement and leadership on the many cases he worked on and for your respect and friendship to him over the years. Thank you to the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, past and present, for their detailed analysis, thoughtful questions and comments, and for pushing his projects to be better. And thank you to the many wonderful city employees, planners, directors, city managers, attorneys, and everyone else over the years who collaborated with him to turn good projects into great projects. There were countless hours in meetings, emails, and phone calls. Thank you for helping to make my father's career more than just a job. To him, one of his great life's purposes was to bring good development to the Valley, including to Goodyear, and to do so with integrity, professionalism, and if you knew him well, a little humor. So thank you on behalf of my family, my firm, and myself. I want you to know that your contributions to the city and to the Valley, they do matter, and they're deeply appreciated. Thank you.
I'm going to take mayor's privilege. And I would have never done the little saying about the timing if I knew this was you coming before us. I knew your father from the very beginning, since 2005 I was on council. And he was always very effective and friendly. We could always trust him to know whatever he said was right, and he was a pleasure to work for. I don't know if anybody else on the council is here. If you have any comments, please go ahead.
No, I had, Taylor, I had obviously expressed my comments to you in an email. But your father was very instrumental in both the development, but also the development of council members and the way that we understood how development works from the other side of the table. And that's always very helpful to understand it as a whole, rather than just than a few parts. And that was always a great conversation to have with your dad when I had the opportunity to see him monthly and see you at breakfast. So as I said, I'm just grateful for the opportunity and for the lessons that he taught me and I know all of us here. So just give your best to the rest of your family.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Joe?
I'm sorry to hear about your loss. And I did appreciate when your dad would come before, straight shooter, just lay it all out. And all the time I've had a chance to deal with him, he always enjoyed our interaction. So again, sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, we were just lucky to have him be a part of Goodyear. We've grown so much. And when he first started with us, we were at a small growth stage. And so he was here to start it off. So again, thank you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Taylor.
Will the city clerk please read Consent Agenda Items 1 through 4 by title only, please?
Number 1: Approval of Minutes. Number 2: Approve the Budget Transfers for Fiscal Year 2021. Number 3: Approve a New Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Arizona Pizza Company. Number 4: Accept the Arizona Department of Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative (UASI) grant. Number 5: Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2108, approving the modification of assessment number 13 within McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. Number 6: Adopt Ordinance Number 2020-1484, amending Ordinance 91-323, authorizing the city of Goodyear to submit fingerprints to the Department of Public Safety for the purposes of evaluating the fitness of prospective employees and volunteers in declaring an emergency. Number 7: Approve the Final Plot of Pebble Creek Phase 2 Unit 59 Subject to Stipulations. Number 8: Approve the Final Plot of El Cidro Phase 1 Parcel 1B Subdividing the Property and Subject to Stipulations. Number 9: Approve the Final Plot of El Cidro Parcel 1D Phase 2 Subject to Stipulations. Number 10: Approve the Final Plot of El Cidro Phase 1 Parcel 1E Subdividing the Property and Subject to Stipulations. Number 11: Approve the Termination and Release of the Job Creation Agreement with Nike IHM Inc. 12: Approve the Map of Dedication for El Cidro Infrastructure Phase 1B Subject to Stipulations. Number 13: Approve the Public Utility Sidewalk and Access Easement needed for El Cidro Phase 1B infrastructure needed to support map of dedication for El Cidro Infrastructure Phase 1B. Number 14: Authorize the Execution of Utility Easement to Arizona Public Service Company required for development of the Goodyear Recreation Campus located southwest of Harrison Street and Estrella Parkway.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from this consent agenda? Then can I have a motion a second to approve Items 1 through 14? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stiff and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're going to go with the public hearings. As you can see, we have five this evening on the agenda. So the first public hearing idea is to consider the amendments of Article 7 and Article 9 of the zoning ordinance. I'm going to open the public hearing. Principal Planner Steve Karashi representing. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight's presentation, Amendment to Articles 7 and 9 for Electronic Message Displays. And just some background, Article 7, that's the Article 7 of the zoning ordinance that regulates all signage within the city. The next article we're amending tonight is Article 9, and that is special districts, which is basically unique regulations for unique areas. We have several districts within the city. And the one we're going to talk about a little tonight is the McDowell Road District, which was basically, you know, businesses along McDowell Road from basically 145th West to Saraval. And that district was adopted in 2017 for the purpose of allowing electronic message displays for those developments along McDowell Road. And a couple definitions we'll talk about tonight. The electronic message displays, those are the main item of tonight's hearing. Also want to talk about the reader panel, another signage that you'll see with a change of copy, but more the manual means you're actually going up there and placing the letters or numbers. So electronic message displays, generally, they're prohibited within the city. The exceptions were the McDowell Road corridor. There are also fueling stations. You also see that type of sign for the pricing for fuel. We also have our digital marquees on the freeway. Also schools, schools use them. They're outside of our zoning regulations. So you'll see schools from time to time use that type of signage. So for tonight, the reason we're here, back in June, there was the council work session, and the direction to staff was to move forward with these signs on a wider basis to allow businesses within the city to have this type of sign. So in moving forward, we looked at our zoning ordinance, looked at what sections we needed to amend to permit these types of signs. And what we thought was the best way was to allow the electronic messages displays on existing or new monument signs within the city. And we're going to propose those to be allowed in the commercial areas per council direction, but also industrial areas, anticipating that they would find that type of sign also useful. And in those commercial industrial, that also includes any planned area development that also has a commercial or industrial base. And because it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance, it did require it to go through the public hearing process. So it does require Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council review and approval. So what we're proposing then is to allow it in the commercial industrial districts within the city. And it would be on the monument sign. So that is the typical sign you see out on the streets, on the arterials. General-looking one right here, typical sign that you might see, the monument signs for the commercial areas. The displays, and we're going to start getting into a little bit of the standards that we're proposing, but displays would be static, so no video, no animation, no movement, no sound. Displays would have to be up for at least eight seconds. So that would be the minimum time that any one image would be on the display. Changing between images would be instantaneous. There would be no fading, slowly transitioning to another. It would need to occur very quickly. And then what we would like to propose then, from dusk till dawn, with electronic message displays, the main concern is at night that the sign is too bright. So we'll cap it at 300 nits, which is basically a state... Most of these we're taking from the state standards for outdoor advertising. So that's the 300 nits that you'll see. We're also proposing that if the sign is within 150 feet of a single-family residential district, that'll be shut off after 10:00 p.m. And again, that's for purposes of light trespass into someone's residential yard. Also, if the sign is malfunctions, you know, if you have a jump image or too bright image, another requirement is that the sign would be shut off. It'd have to have a mechanism to shut it off. And then a general provision, this is pretty much for signage all within the city, no off-site advertising on the sign. Just because you now have an electronic message and you can have several different messages cycling, it still needs to be for products, that business that's onsite. So onsite sign advertising only. And for the size of the display, we have, it'll be 50% of the allowed copy area, or 24 square feet. So a couple examples, this image here, this is from the Canyon Trails Town Center, Super Target there on Cotton Lane in Yuma. It's a large monument sign. It's about 20 feet tall. So you have 150 square feet of copy area. So 50% would be a 75, would be 75 square feet. So when we look at that, 24 square feet's less. We do not want a 75-square-foot display. They would get 24 square feet that they could place somewhere here, probably remove the panel at the display. They could retrofit this kind of sign. A smaller sign now, a one-user, one-business-type-of-sign, this one here is about eight feet tall. And so that would have 32 square feet of allowable signage. So what they could have is 50% or 24 square feet. The 16 square feet, the 50%, that's the lesser of the two. So they would get 16 square feet for an electronic message display. And this one here, it's about 2 by 5. So what you're seeing here in this example, about 10 square feet. So that would fit within allocation that the zoning ordinance would propose that they could have. And again, the basis for a lot of our standards, Arizona state statutes, a lot of the Valley cities have adopted those same standards, the eight seconds, immediate transition. These are pretty much the same standards that we had previously adopted in '17 for McDowell Road District and also for our digital marquees. And so for Amendment to Article 9, basically, we're going to delete, we're recommending that that section be deleted since we no longer need that McDowell Road District, since its main purpose was to allow the electronic signs, since we're going to allow them on a wider city basis. There's no need for that special district. So we're just recommending that section be deleted. And again, just a comparison with other cities, we have Surprise in Avondale-Buckeye. There, they do allow these digital displays to occur. And then the separation, the 150 feet that we were talking about before, we have a few cities that do incorporate that. And again, they use about a similar separation, 150 feet down to about 80 feet or so. So we're in line with what other cities are doing. And because it was a public hearing, we did take care of all the notice that was required for that public hearing. There was also over 1,300 mailings sent to stakeholders within the city. To date, staff did not receive any opposition from any of that notice provided. We did not receive any opposition to the proposal. So for our recommendation, there is a split recommendation. The staff recommendation is approval of the Amendment to Articles 7 and 9. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they did hear this on October 14. They did recommend denial of this amendment for the reasons of safety, aesthetics, public outreach, and light trespass as further described within the staff report. There was also one resident at the hearing who voiced opposition to the proposed amendment. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staff's available for any questions.
Good presentation, very clear. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2098 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2098, declaring a public record that certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled amending Article 7 of the City of Goodyear's zoning ordinance.
I did not ask if you had any public speakers. Do you have any?
I don't have any.
All right, I'm so glad. Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, if I haven't done that already. Will the city clerk please, did you read the resolution yet?
I already read it.
All right, thank you. So can I have an motion a second to approve the Resolution Number 2020-2098? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Molly?
So Steve, this is something we've talked about for years and years and years. I mean, this isn't a new subject for any of us, except the newer folks on council. What I envisioned with these signs, they would also be a public safety tool for us when we have an amber alert or when we have an emergency that we need to get information out, when a road is closed, when we have trees down, things like that. That's how I can see it used after hours or whenever we have an emergency. Because we don't have any one location where anyone can go and get all the information of what's going on in the city. I just remember when we had the bad storm and half of the trees down Bullard Avenue were all blown down and Estrella was blown down. We had garage doors blown off. And I just think that we may have the ability, and I don't know if that is, I don't know quite how to make that work, if we would have the ability to possibly use some of those signs on our major thoroughfares if they put an electric sign in, if it could be used for us if we needed it. Specifically, we have it already at the ballpark, I mean, sorry, the community park on...
Litchfield.
Yeah, on Litchfield, sorry, Litchfield by the fire station. And people look there to see when the classes are. They look there to see if the pool's open or the splash pad. So they're really great information tools for us to have because not everybody is online and not everybody reads our in-focus. And my last question is, for the Culver sign, is that the size that they use at all the Culver locations? Because I don't want us to impose a different size if other cities are allowing a larger size or what. It's like when Burger came in and we said you can't have red, and that's their national color. But I just want to make sure that that conversation has been held for those that we know want these signs. If they're coming in with a reasonable amount and that's what the other cities allow, then I'm hoping that's how you drafted this language, and I'm assuming you did.
I think Christopher Baker came to the table. Do you have comments?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilperson Campbell. Regarding your first question, regards, could the city use the signage to display public information? The signs would be privately owned, so...
But we could still ask them.
Yes, ma'am, we can ask them, but they are privately owned. So it's not like we could type on a keyboard, road closed, and it would show up there. But we can certainly create some sort of database and share it with police and fire and 911 and so forth that they could reach out and see if they could get that message out. But I just want to be clear, the signs are publicly owned, unless it's a city sign like at the ballpark or if Parks and Recs wants to put one at the rec campus or things of that nature. So, but the signs are privately owned.
So Christopher, while you're there, so the 150 feet from the houses, are there any houses that are going to be within 150 feet of our rec center? Because I think that's a perfect place to put a sign. So do you know? I don't know, I'm sorry. I don't know how to measure.
Mayor, council members, yes, I did look at, knowing that Culvers was an important part of this, I did look at Culvers. I did look at the community park, potentially where their signage would be located. Neither one of those would meet that 150-foot threshold.
Great, thank you very much. That's it, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Loretano?
I didn't hear what he said.
Oh, no.
It was, it would or wouldn't?
Would not.
Would not. So it would be outside of the 150?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm just, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead, Councilman Loretano.
I want to thank you for the presentation. And I know this is an issue that we brought to you all to try to get through for our business community that is currently suffering. And we need to make sure that we do help them make sure that they get the word out and stay in business because we do want to attract restaurants and businesses. Those are several of the concerns, and I understand the concerns that were raised. Those were the concerns that we also heard when we put up the big freeway signs and the community park. And I don't think we've seen an increase in any negative effects because of that. I like the fact we have the dimming, that we have the distance, 150 distance, that it looks like it's going to be good. And I would like to see one at our rec center as well because I think that's important, especially, or the ballpark. And those will be our signs, and I think those would be great to be able to get those other messages out for our citizens and everything. So I do support this. I think it's a help for the business community, and it keeps us competitive with our neighboring cities that do allow these. So I believe our restrictions are fair and equitable. And I'm sure if there's a specific problem, a specific area, we can address that with the business owner. So I do appreciate it, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Kato?
Well, I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. They work really hard, and they gave this a lot of consideration. They had a lot of good discussion on it. I drove down 145th Avenue down to Pebble Creek on the way here, and I didn't see an electronic sign until I got to the Circle K in Gases 224. So even the places where it has been permitted since 2017, it doesn't look like anybody has necessarily availed themselves to it. Some of the comments and concerns by the Planning and Zoning was a Las Vegas effect. And I would say that the only thing that I've seen in the Valley near, close by, that has that Las Vegas effect would be the Glendale Entertainment Center along the 101 or downtown where the arena and the ballpark are. There's lots of lights, lots of signs, lots of moving things. But Councilmember Pizzillo and I drove by the Culver sign in Avondale the other day. It's a modest sign. It's, I don't see this to be a Las Vegas type of distraction. I think that these are reasonable. I think the size is reasonable. And actually, the electronic version is easier to read than that manual copy one that was listed. So it's a lot clearer. So I am also in support of this.
Any other comments? Councilman Pizzillo?
Do we use the reverse 911 when there's emergencies? That's the chief. The reason why I ask that question is I can appreciate putting messages on signs. But the problem is, is that's only people be riding by the sign. To me, the most important would be the reverse 911 because you've got people maybe leaving their house, you know, that doesn't know what's going on out there, and they may be riding right into where the sign is. So if we have a real emergency, if we use a reverse 911, I think, I would think that would be much more effective than putting messages on electronic signs, letting people know that maybe a tree's down at, you know, or don't go in this area because it's flooded. Go ahead, chief.
Well, we have our fire chief here.
Yes, good evening, thanks, Councilmember Pizzillo. We do use the SENS or the reverse 911. A couple of cases that we've used it in the past was, if you remember, the smoke was really bad for the fire that was here about six or seven years ago. So we used it for that to notify people as it got worse throughout the time. We also use it for lost children. We use it for many things. So it is available through our 911 telecommunications center, and we both do it in both English and Spanish also.
Okay, and the reason, the only reason why I bring it up is to me, that's more valuable than any message.
Except the silver alert.
Well, on silver alert, you're going to see those on I-10 type of, you know, overpass. But if we have flooding in the area or whatever, and you don't want them there, getting it out to the homes before people get in their car and drive, I think, would be much more. But I appreciate that, thank you.
The only other thing I'd add, silver alert, blue alert, and amber alert is all done through the Department of Public Safety. There are certain protocols that need to be met. However, that's where they use a lot of the cell phones, where you'll get that alert and you'll get it directly to your cellphone.
Thank you.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I also appreciate all the work that staff did and also the zoning committee. I might be one of the outlier, but I like how we have it now or even just around maybe the freeways or interchange, just like that. I'd rather not see it used all around the entire city of Goodyear just for aesthetic purposes and the light. And I know you worked hard to put some of those barriers and things like that, not take away from the businesses. I think that a lot of them are doing pretty well without that use of the sign right now. But yeah, I think I'm going to be probably the outlier. I like, I think it takes away from the aesthetics of how we're doing it right now, so.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve. You know, when the digital marquees or digital billboards came up in the I-10 discussion, I voted against it for a number of reasons, but some of them were what?
Was that the main shopping center?
No, the, just the big ones.
Big ones up on the highway, yeah, I can't.
The big ones that we put up.
Okay.
For some of the same reasons, I think, that Councilmember Hampton is, you know, kind of expressing tonight. But as time has gone on and we've seen what is transpiring with marketing and signage, et cetera, I'm very much in favor of what we're doing here. The keeping it to a minute, you know, this 50% or 24 square feet, I think it's the right, it's the right... I think it's the right, it's the right approach. It allows us to adapt to what's happening in the future. The future being today or the future being 10 years from now. I think we've seen an evolution in signage design and the technology behind it. And honestly, if it's, and I said this with the digital billboards, if it's okay for us to do it, then it has to be okay for everybody else to do it. And we put it up at the park before we let anybody else in the city put one of these signs up. So for those reasons, I'm going to, I'm going to be in support of this. I do greatly appreciate the work that the Planning and Zoning Commission puts in month in and month out. And even the discussion that they had on this particular subject. And it's rare that we talk, or that we take a opposite position of P&amp;Z. Because I think they're usually really on track with us. But every once in a while, there's, there's times when we have to stand up and this is one of them, so.
Any other from council?
I can clarify.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I clarify. I mean, I do appreciate, I think there's a lot of good things that staff changed and tweaked. I just, I don't think I want it across all of Goodyear.
I mean, as we grow up.
Yeah, exactly. As we grow up. I don't want all of our streets to look that way or like downtown Phoenix or other places that are, I don't know. It might not, because they're going to have control of how they do it and, I mean, within the boundaries, but if everybody is doing it. So, I don't know, I do like these, but not just for the entire city. So that's, I guess that's where I am. I think we're pretty close, but that's just where I am. So, thank you.
Well, lastly, but I voted to sign down when I was the councilperson. And I have regretted through the years. It was a very nice building. They had a monument sign, but they're making it a little bit larger. So I was being, you know, Miss Councilperson, you know, I'm going to strict, the strict rules, we're not going to do that. And I've regretted that because that building has never really developed into much, and it's on McDowell. You know which one it is. And it was a beautiful building. And I guess I convinced everybody else to turn it down, and I've always regretted that. We have to help our businesses in a dignified manner and do it well, long-lasting, acceptable socially. And I think that's what we try to do. And I think we're accomplishing that in Goodyear. But during the downturn, who has supported us during the COVID? Who has supported us? Our small businesses. It's amazing. Our city has actually shopped in their own city and kept us alive. And this is the least we can do there. But I think we're protecting them because I think we're okay in good taste. And also, I don't know about you, I get tired of driving around trying to find where I want to go. And this will be nice. I don't have to. Well, if I have my iPhone, I guess I'll turn in there, but I don't have to be peering out the window in the darkness and never seeing a sign anywhere. So I'm like the rest of you, I'm 100% for that. So why don't we, the discussion is finished. How about let's do a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Nay.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Well, let's go to the ordinance. Will the city clerk read ordinance number 2020-1479 by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 2020-1479 amending sections of Article 7 sign regulations and Article 9 special districts of the zoning ordinance as amended, providing for corrections severability in effective date and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to approve ordinance 2020-1479? Do I hear that motion?
Still moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip and a second from Councilman Kano. Open council discussion? I think we've had all we wanted to do, don't we? Okay, roll call vote. Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Good. The next public hearing is an item to consider adopting the zoning ordinance tech amendments for establishment of recreational marijuana establishment. Open public hearing. Here she comes. I thought she wasn't here. So we have Planning Manager Katie Wilkum presenting. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you are aware, there is a ballot measure, the Smart and Safe Arizona Act, to be considered by Arizona voters this election season. This act would authorize the consumption, sale, processing, growing, and manufacture of marijuana products recreationally. Marijuana establishments would be licensed by the state under this bill. I am by no means an expert on this bill. We're scrambling to learn about it. However, it does appear to become effective upon canvassing. It looks like the bill also is going to be accepting early applications, starting in January and ending in March. There is some language in there about, again, one license per 10 pharmacies, which, again, I'll talk about. That's what they did with the medical marijuana facilities. So it doesn't go into detail. So again, if it passes, we're going to have to wait and see how the state reacts to this, which is one of the reasons I don't have a lot of details. But it does appear that the bill's setting it up for some lottery system. And the reason the dates are important is because this could happen very quickly. You know, they could be issuing licensing in March for these types of facilities. So looking back to the medical marijuana, we adopted zoning regulations for medical marijuana facilities back in 2011. There is one existing facility in Goodyear. I believe it opened around 2013. And so it's been operating for some time in the city of Goodyear. Again, when those medical marijuana facilities were adopted, they had a regulation that one per every 10 pharmacies could be licensed. That worked out to about 130 medical marijuana facilities at the time. So there was a cap on how many facilities there could be. However, the state was still concerned that there could be an over-concentration of facilities in any one area. So they came up with this using their already established community health analysis areas, or CHAWS, to distribute the licenses, and they would allow one license per CHAWS. Now, some of the more rural CHAWS didn't get a license, so then they later did additional lotteries. And those CHAWS that had the most residents with medical marijuana cards were able to have a second medical marijuana facility. And so this allowed an even distribution of these facilities, so there wasn't an over-concentration. And it seems to have worked well. Again, in Goodyear, we have one facility. And the state also has stated that in the metro Phoenix area, each CHAWS about 100,000 people. In the more rural areas, it can get down to like 10,000 people a CHAWS. But in the urbanized area, it's closer to 100,000. So I'm going to get back to that, that history is important as we move forward. So now I just want to go over what the recommendations are for the zoning ordinance amendment. And again, one thing I want to note is we do have it set up that this ordinance will only become effective if the ballot measure passes. So if it were to fail, the zoning ordinance would not be amended. There are several definitions that we propose adding that we've pulled from the ballot measure mostly. So we have the definitions that the ballot references. The two I wanted to point out to you was they define marijuana establishment as a facility for retail, cultivation, or manufacturing. So it encompasses all those things. So again, that license, you know, it's important. Somebody couldn't use marijuana for manufacturing. A gas station couldn't start selling marijuana. They would, anytime you engage in any of those activities, you become a marijuana establishment and have to go through the state licensing process. The ballot also introduces dual licensing. And so we added the word facility to the end, dual licensed facility. And so that's a facility that is licensed for both medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. So Article 3 is the zoning districts portion. And so in there, we have stated that a dual licensed facility is permitted in the light industrial and general industrial districts. That is where medical marijuana facilities are permitted. So we're following that same concept, being consistent with the medical marijuana facility. But again, by us stating that only a dual licensed facility is permitted, that means only facilities that have both a medical marijuana and a recreational marijuana facility are permitted. We only have one medical marijuana facility. So this in effect limits the recreational marijuana to that one existing facility we already have. And then in Article 4, which is our special uses section of the zoning ordinance, where this is where the meat of the regulations are. We reintroduce this CHAWS concept. Basically, we agreed with the state's methodology for making sure there wasn't an over-concentration of these facilities. It's a tried and true that's been going on since the medical marijuana ballot was passed. It's worked in Goodyear. It seems to be working in other, with other communities. So what you'll, what staff recommends and the planning commission recommend is you adopt this CHAWS for Goodyear. And the reason we want to adopt it ourselves is because we don't have control over the state. The state could change the CHAWS where they are, so we're going to adopt it so we have control over this. We just use the term CHAWS. Again, we're trying to get this through quickly. There might have been a better word for it since we're adopting it for ourselves. We will require a zoning permit for these establishments. That's an administrative process. It's basically a minor permit that they get from us. And it allows staff to make sure they meet all the rules and regulations of the zoning ordinance. It does not include a public process. One thing, and I apologize, but I do also want to point out to you that when we brought this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we had just copied the boundaries of the CHAWS. And there are technically two CHAWS in Goodyear. And you can see there's one in South Goodyear. And the El Paso gas line was the dividing line between the two. However, that CHAWS in the south is really unnecessary. Because again, as I stated, you have to have land zoned industrial to locate these facilities. There's no land, there's no industrially zoned land there. The general plan doesn't have any planned industrial land use in that area. There's also no services in the area. So in the near five, 10 years, it'd be incredibly difficult to develop any commercial property in that area. So it really became a moot point. So we do propose a change from Planning Commission's recommendation. We had had two CHAWS in there. Now we're recommending just adopting one CHAWS. Again, as I stated, the concept of the CHAWS was about 100,000 people per CHAWS. So we wrote into the regulations that when the city of Goodyear reaches a population of 200,000, we will add a second CHAWS. So that we keep about 100,000 per CHAWS. So basically, every time the city of Goodyear adds about 100,000 residents, we'll add an additional area where an additional facility can go. Now, of course, the state regulates licensing. So even though we could add another CHAWS, it doesn't mean there'd be a license available from the state. We don't have control over that situation. Of course, you know, by the time we add another 100,000 people, I have a feeling that marijuana regulations are going to change significantly. You know, they've already been changing rapidly in the last 10 years. So in effect, if this ordinance is adopted by the city council, it will have the effect immediately of only allowing one recreational marijuana facility located at our current medical marijuana facility. No other, a second facility could not be located in Goodyear until Goodyear reached a population of 200,000. And then, oh, I did have the map. So this is the map showing one CHAWS. It matches our city boundaries. And I do just also want to clarify, these, we have requirements of separation from these types of facilities from other areas, as you can see here, from residential districts, schools, parks, churches, adult businesses. And we do measure that from a facility wall. One thing we did do have in here is that right now, the medical marijuana facility is 2,500 square feet. For a dual facility, we did allow that to go up to 5,000 square feet since there'll be 2,000 facilities. So the size of the building could change. So we will have to make sure if we get a zoning permit, that it still meets all these separations. Because if the building increases, that means the distance increased. And we haven't gone through and seen, I don't think that they'll have any problem meeting this, but it would depend upon the design of the facility. So I just want to make clear that all these separation requirements are still in place. There have been no objections received from the public regarding this. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission recommended approval by a five-to-one vote. The dissenting vote actually recommended that we prohibit these types of facilities outright in Goodyear. And that's why it was a dissenting vote. And then again, I wanted to point out that staff has made a change since the Planning Commission to that CHAWS map. So there's just one CHAWS or one area. And I also want to point out, the reason, I know it may seem like it overcomplicates things by having the CHAWS map rather than just go to population. But one thing it does allow us to do in the future is also make sure that there wouldn't be an over-concentration in Goodyear. So say we reach 200,000 in population and a second facility we're going to locate. We can make sure we draw the CHAWS so that there's an even distribution of population so that the second, you know, facility wouldn't locate adjacent to the existing one. And then we end up with, you know, like a marijuana row kind of situation. So by making it geographic, it allows us to make sure that there's an even distribution in population. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That was a very great presentation. Clarified a lot of my questions and concerns and well done. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak?
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing with the city clerk. Please read Resolution number 2020-2113 by title only.
Adopt Resolution number 2020-2113 declaring a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Goodyear CHAWS map.
All right, that's, can I have a motion, please? I'm sorry, motion and a second to approve?
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor and a second from Councilwoman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
Katie, thanks for all this work. We had had an executive session on this as we were preparing for this to come forward. So council has been previously briefed on it. But I do have a question. So going forward, five years, 10 years from now, this isn't as bad as everybody thinks it is. How hard is this going to be to change to lighten up, let's say? Move it from 100,000 to 50,000 or to change, we're going to add, we're going to make three CHAWS within the city? How hard is that? And how does that process, what does that look like for the public?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It would just be the typical zoning ordinance text amendment process. So if we did want to open it up more, it is easier to do that open up regulations and back off regulations. So we would just, you know, take direct, staff would take direction from council on what we would want to see. And we would draft a new ordinance and it would go through the public process and adopt the changes.
And the reason that I ask is we have, we have no idea.
Right.
This could be, I don't want to say the greatest thing, but this could not be as bad as we think it's going to, as we think it potentially could be. Or it could be much worse than we think it could be. So just trying to set the public expectation as we, as we take these going forward. So thanks for the work.
Councilman Pizzillo?
I have more of a question for the attorney. If we can, if they can only have one located in Goodyear, which happens to be one that's medical already, and say the state does not award a license to that specific facility, are we in any type of, what I'm trying to, in a problem where now we've totally eliminated it within the city? Because the one place that we're allowing it did not get a license from the state?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's an interesting scenario. If you look at the statutory structure of the proposition, those medical marijuana facilities are first in line for the recreational licenses. So I think there's an expectation that those facilities will be licensed. You could, yes, I would think that could possibly happen. That if you, since the statute allows the dual licensing, and we're adopting a dual licensing requirement as allowed by the state statute, if the state were to not grant that license. the state statute, if the state were to not grant that license, it could create a problem. It's a good point. I don't know if there's any legal liability to that, because the statute also allows a community to pass an ordinance, much like Gilbert did, and just prohibit recreational facilities.
Okay.
Although there's some contrary language in the statute about that, that issue as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, Joe asked a question that I had too, just about if, which I think you answered it, but if that facility decides not to, I don't know why they wouldn't, if Joe was not to, or then they would have a second, so it'd be a medical and a private one, it 'd still be in the same industrial area within Goodyear. So it could be two, not, not doing the same thing, one recreation, one, one medical, potentially.
Councilman Hampton, I, our ordinance is going to contemplate that it's a single-dual license facility, so it'll be the same, the same business.
Okay, it has to be the same business, is what we're saying. Okay, okay. And then, yeah, and I do appreciate all the extra work around the CHAWS and everything from staff as well. And I know this isn't saying, we're just preparing, just for public sake, we're, why we're doing this is why staff is recommending it is because we're preparing in case it does pass, which it might not pass, but we have something there in case it does pass now or later in the future. So I do appreciate staff getting in front of it and making sure that we're prepared in case it does pass. So, thank you.
Councilmember Loretano?
And I also want to thank you, and so the, what Councilmember Hampton said, I think it's important the public knows that we're not, yes, endorsing this in any fashion, but we do know that if this is passed, we want to make sure we're ready because of the quick turnaround. I did have a question, because our city is so linear, and we don't want to say, like you said, have corridors that are just medic as we grow. Is there any way that, I guess, is there any way that when we do draw that CHAW in the future, it does, do we just look at the population? Do we look at the, is there anything in the distance between, you know, Facility A and Facility B? I mean, because you've got Estrella that goes way out there to Mobile, and you've got Pebble Creek way on the other side.
Thank you. Honestly, we haven't delved that deeply into the subject of how the CHAWS would be drawn.
Okay. No, I'm just curious.
We were just thinking population specifically, but we weren't even, would it be a vertical line or a horizontal line? We didn't even get that deep into.
Because it has to be an industrial, so if it's not an industrial area, it can't.
Right, so there's no industrial in Estrella today, so that would probably be a factor in how it would be drawn.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, yeah, Councilman Campbell?
I have a question, Katie, and this might be for Chief. Has there been any problem with this dispensary handling all the cash that it's handled? Now that it's going to be doing, if it passes, anyone without a card can go in and get marijuana. So if it passes, I would suspect they're going to have a lot more folks going in. Do you know?
Thank you. I, I mean, I would suspect so too. There are still, I can't speak to the cash, there are still regulations in effect of how much product can be stored on site to limit, you know, the idea of limiting theft opportunities. Yeah, I don't know if Chief has.
I know when Chief is coming forward to maybe address that.
Everyone going to allow it. I suggested that we require whoever has the dispensary have a guard on duty just because of the cash, since they don't take credit cards. And I, that was poo-pooed, so, I mean, I just, I don't know.
Can we let Chief Rodriguez address that?
Hi, Councilmember Wally Campbell. Good question. We haven't had any issues per se with the one that we do have. We do understand that there is cash on site and so forth. I think they have a good system in removing it from there and getting it to wherever they need to go, but we haven't had anything with the one site we do have here in Goodyear. And it's hard to predict the future, right? I mean, once it becomes legalized, there'll be more people using it possibly. However, we are prepared to work with the businesses and to make sure that our public is safe the best we can.
Okay, do we, do they have the set number of hours, Katie, they can operate? I've forgotten.
Thank you, yes. The hours of operation are between eight and seven. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Any other comments? Well, I think that what the terms that you've come to decide upon, I totally support this. I don't think that we can go too far out in the future. I understand your concern. Yeah, I know it was, but I'm looking at it, I, we'll let that counsel and take care of that at the time, and they'll have more information than we have at this time, so, so good discussion. And I didn't, I wasn't addressing because what you said, okay, I just.
May I to, just to answer Councilmember Campbell's questions too? We do require that they have an alarm system, a video surveillance system, security lighting, and maintain a security plan. So we do have some provisions for security.
Thank you very much. That's comforting to know.
Councilman Hampton?
This is just looking into the future too, if it, if it becomes a super-popular thing. I'm just curious about traffic and flows and, because it was originally, that area, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it's even a concern, if it'll be that much traffic or if it becomes that popular of a thing to do. I don't know, I don't know if we've thought about that, that's all.
We do not have additional requirements for traffic. It would be treated like any retail, commercial business.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I ever see, I'm just starting to look in the future too, if it's really that popular. I know we have the MVD, MVD right over there and some other industrial-type businesses, so I'm just, I'm just curious if there'll be a line out the door, or if it'll be, or if it'll just be the same, same as it is now, so.
Well, I suppose that's the same we worry about a lot of businesses, so I think that, I think we've found a solution. I think the public is going to like this solution, so let's vote on it. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Well, let's go to the ordinance. Will the city clerk please read ordinance Number 2020-1476 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance 2020-1476 amending Article Two definitions Article Three dash four dash one light industrial park and Article Three dash four dash two general industrial park of the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance, and amending Article Four dash two uses requiring additional evaluation of the City of Goodyear zoning ordinance to add Article Four dash two dash seventeen marijuana dual facility. Adopting Goodyear CHAW map, providing for corrections, providing for an effective date for amendments to the zoning code, providing an effective date of the ordinance, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second? Through ordinance Number 2020-1476. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for discussion. I think we've really had it, haven't we? So roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, let's go to Number 17, the next public hearing. Item to consider approving the Avion at Ballpark Village Plan Area Development. Public hearing opening. Planner Christian Williams will be presenting. Hello, Christian.
How's it going? It's been a while.
Ah, we haven't seen you for a while. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor Lord and City Council. I'm here before you this evening with a request from Ed Bull to conduct a rezoning on a property within the city. The property is approximately 153 acres, and it's located at the northwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Elwood Street. This is right across Estrella Parkway from the Ballpark Development complexes, and the property is currently zoned PAD under the Sun DS Farms Amendment. Zooming in a little bit closer, you can see that this project is north of Estrella Crossing Business Park. It is east of Saraval Village, south of Estrella Vista, and west of both the Reds Development Complex and the other side of the future Ballpark Village Development. This section of Ballpark Village, the section of Ballpark Village it fronts will soon have some multifamily residential, as well as some single-family or court home type products. I will also point out that Wood Boulevard is proposed to cross Estrella Parkway into Avion at Ballpark Village, likely with a traffic signal. So there will be a lot of connections between the currently zoned Ballpark Village and this proposed Avion at Ballpark Village. Additionally, Lower Buckeye Road is likely to go across and connect to future developments within the Ballpark Village on the east side of Estrella. So you can see how these two developments are going to feel very linked. We will talk about this more throughout the presentation and about how this area of the city will feel more like a character area and special village within our city. For a little history on the property, and I will make this brief so that we're not here all night, because I think it's football as well. In 2008, the property was first zoned for a product, a project called Sun DS Farms. It included a mix of residential and commercial uses. In 2014, the project was amended, and in 2019, it was rezoned to only include a mix of single-family residential uses. The 2019 plan, 2019 plan included 50-foot wide lots, 60-foot wide lots, 70-foot wide lots, Z-lots, zero-lot line lots, alley-loaded, single-family detached lots, alley-loaded, single-family attached lots, and cluster products, all with modified development standards. The Sun DS Farms PAD had all custom land uses, which would have been very cumbersome for staff to administer. Without going into much detail on the previous proposal, I will also say that the lot diversity also wasn't as certain as the PAD provided, the flexibility to do quite a bit of different types of products, all in the same product on basically the whole site. Additionally, in contrast, the Avion at Ballpark Village proposal before you today has amenities not envisioned in the Sun DS Farms, and more certainty as to the product type and lot diversity being afforded. Today, the proposal before us is Avion at Ballpark Village, which will include largely R1-6 reduced lots, R1-4 reduced lots, as well as options for R1A, which is single-family attached, and/or R1C, which is cluster homes or alley-loaded products in the southeast corner of the project. The lot diversity is more certain in this new development. The development largely utilizes existing city standards, which is a lot easier for staff to administer, and the amenities, connectivity, and streetscape elements, staff believes will set this development apart from what we currently see of developments its size in Goodyear. In some ways, you could call this development a mini master plan community, which also ties in with the larger Ballpark Village development. A couple highlights from amenities. For amenities, the Central Community Park will be 30% larger than our standard at over seven acres. This will be visible from the main entrance of the community, which is located off of Wood Boulevard and Estrella Parkway. So if you imagine leaving the Ballpark Village area on Wood Boulevard, coming across Estrella Parkway, you will pass through their manicured entrance and make your way to the main seven-acre community park. Off to your right or the north of the park, there'll be a featured community center, which will include a resort-style pool with swimming lanes, a shaded kid area, a hot tub, an open-air recreation center, and gathering areas with restrooms. Pickleball courts, barbecue areas, and a totlot and bike lot, bike rack are also included. The remaining sections of the park will include some recreational fields, which could host two soccer games or other activities, and the park will be connected with decomposed granite trails that run throughout the project. A visual of a very similar community center the developer has built is pictured on the right. That is in the Meadows Community Center up in Camino Lago area Peoria, and this development, they built this community center, so the one they're proposing here has very similar A couple highlights from connectivity. A publicly accessible trail will surround the property, which will include an eight-foot trail made of both decomposed granite and areas of traditional concrete path. There will also be a trail access point to Pioneer Street and Saraval Village and to the Saraval Village HOA Park, so that those residents in the nearby communities can use the trail to traverse the property and get to the Ballpark Village area. This infill project also really helps bridge pedestrian access from the residents to the west of here to the Ballpark Village area and its current and future amenities and destinations. Additionally, adjacent to Saraval Village, there will be open space, trails, and view fences to provide visibility and accessibility between the two developments. The image on the bottom right shows the existing Pioneer Street, sorry, it's actually the bottom left, shows the existing Pioneer Street at the end of Saraval Village. This will in the future open up onto a green belt and have trail connections, which allow these residents to access trails and go around the community through to Ballpark Village. The walls for the project along Estrella Parkway will include many open areas, where instead of having a solid block wall along the Estrella Parkway, there'll be a very open field. They're going to have rail fences and view fences, so it'll make it feel like it's part of the greater Ballpark Village community and not just another subdivision along Estrella Parkway. Again, the goal here is that when you drive down Estrella Parkway, you're not passing by a dozen disconnected communities, but you feel like you've entered a really unique and special part of this city. This mini master plan community will add to that sense of arrival to this important part of our city. And approximately 60 to 70% of the Estrella Parkway street frontage will be open and have rail fences as opposed to that solid block wall. The exhibit on the right shows the trail systems and pathways in blue, purple, and To highlight some streetscape elements, detached sidewalks will be used when an eight-foot planting buffer can be provided for. The HOA will maintain the plants in that planting strip to ensure that they are maintained effectively and are replaced when they're damaged. And the R1A, which is a single-family attached, and the R1C cluster home area, if a five-foot planting area cannot fit in the front yards, the sidewalk will be attached, but the HOA will maintain the street trees on the resident side of the property and maintain the residential front yards to ensure that shade trees are maintained and upkept. An example of a detached sidewalk is provided in the picture on the left. Half of the homes zoned in the R1-6 and R1-4 reduced zones will have porches or courtyards. Again, an example of that can be seen on the left. In the smaller R1-4 reduced lots, decorative pavers will be used in the front yards of all the homes. An example of that can be seen in the upper right. For the R1A and R1C homes, which could include six-pack court homes or town homes, they will have one shared driveway cut for two or more homes, and alley-loaded products will utilize an alley, so there are less sea of garages facing the street, but a nice and welcoming street frontage that feels pedestrian-oriented and gives this area character. There will also be a very nice entry feature at every entrance into this community. An example of the monument that will be placed on Wood Boulevard and Estrella Parkway is shown on the bottom of the screen. It will stand at approximately 11 feet in height and bring a grand sense of arrival. In addition, there will be one secondary monument sign on Elwood Street, which is about seven feet in height, a little bit smaller version of the one you see here. And on Lower Buckeye Road, there will be smaller concreted wall accents that angle from where the top of the wall cap would be and basically guide you into the entrance of the neighborhood. So basically, it's an elongated artistic version of the image you see there. Now, I will point out an opportunity the city has to make navigating in our city just a little bit less confusing as we add more population to this special part of town. If you drive down Estrella Parkway from the north to the south, you hit Goodyear Boulevard North, Yuma Road, followed by Goodyear Boulevard South. Then continuing south, you hit Lower Buckeye Parkway, which has a signal, and in the future, it is very likely that there will be a signal at the new, a new signal at Lower Buckeye Road. As a note, unlike Goodyear Boulevard, those city center loop roads, Lower Buckeye Parkway and Lower Buckeye Road do not connect, and they do not loop to one another. The city and the developer are exploring renaming this street Lower Buckeye Road to Ballpark Village Boulevard in order to avoid future confusion as people look for that one through street that gets you from Loop 303 to the Ballpark Village area. The map illustrates in teal where the city will pursue renaming the street name, so if we're looking on the map on the bottom right here, that's where we're going to pursue renaming the street name. The area is in orange, in the future would be named Ballpark Village Boulevard when they are constructed. And the area in red is a dead-end road that does not go through. The Avion at Ballpark Village Development proposes to remove this asphalt area and transform it into a well-landscaped area with a decomposed granite trail. And that upper image on the upper, the middle, will show you kind of where the road's going to end, it kind of hooks up north into the other neighborhood, and beyond that point, we'll be landscaping. So staff has evaluated the impacts of this proposed zoning and the great, to the greater community, and with no major concerns being found, staff recommends council approval to rezone the property from Sun DS Farms PAD amendment to Avion at Ballpark Village PAD, subject to the stipulations found in the staff report. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I think I see Ed Bull in the audience. Would he like to come forth and speak tonight?
Aaron Consel, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. We agree with Christian. Please approve.
Great, thank you so much for coming.
My pleasure.
Appreciate it. All right, so are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read, please read Resolution Number 2020-2102 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2102 declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled "Legal Description and Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number 20-01A and Avion at Ballpark Village Planned Area Development, October 2020 Development Regulations."
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second?
filed with the city clerk titled Legal Description and Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number 20-01A and Avion at Ballpark Village Planned Area Development, October 2020 Development Regulations.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve the Resolution 2020-2102? Do I hear that motion?
Move.
I believe Councilman Campbell made a motion and seconded by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for discussion. Councilman Lortano?
Thank you for the presentation and thank you, Ed, for bringing this forward. Uh, my first house was over on Magnolia Street over there in 1994, and we've been, and I've been waiting for this parcel to develop for decades. This is a great plan. I like the variety. I think it'll sell out quick. It's got great amenities, so I fully support it.
Vice Mayor?
I was just absolutely thrilled we were getting some single-family development come into the city. So, um, again, I, this area has been vacant for so long, um, and it's a, it's a really nice development. Um, I think it'll, it, whatever we can get to happen across the street on the, on the east side of Australia Parkway, um, I think that will only, this will only make that better. Um, of course, I'm gonna raise concern about the row of stoplights that you showed along there.
Yeah, I had the same thing.
If we, uh, if we don't figure out a way to get those so they are in synchronization with one another, I will never approve another stoplight in this city. So please, uh, please make a note of that, somebody, somewhere along the line. Uh, but other than that, there's, that's no reason to say no to this project. This is a good project.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I also appreciate it well. I think it's a good mix and diversity. Can you remind me what, what's going in that phase three there on the corner?
Phase three is going to be your R1A or R1. So there's three types of products that could go there. Residential or cluster homes basically, attached, single-family, or you could end up having R1-4 reduced, but the lot dimensions will be a little different than what you see in the remainder of the property.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I like all the amenities. I used to jog around there, so I, I like the idea of cutting that road and then making all the extra things as well. And then it's just the high level as well. Was there be disclosures to the residents that buy in there about the, I guess, the galvanizing plant and the aluminum plant that are nearby?
Galvanizing plant, aluminum plant, no.
There won't be any disclosures for that? Okay. Just gotta, they just gotta look around? Okay. Okay. And... Yeah, I think the houses look, look nice too, so I think it's a good product. Thank you.
Councilman Keno?
Well, I think I'm echoing a lot of comments, but I do appreciate the creative, uh, project, the diversity of projects, the connectivity, the emphasis on shade trees, the walkability, uh, just well done. I, I, I'm very excited about this, this particular project, and I think it's gonna be a real asset to the community.
Anyone else? Well, then I'll speak. Um, I think the trail is so creative. It's something that we talked about early on with Goodyear. In some of the earlier areas, like behind Pebble Creek and beyond, could have been connected had someone, the developer, been so creative or we had the idea. And this is exactly what that part should have been, so that people don't have to go out on the road. They'd have that walking ability. So I think, I mean, I'm excited about this. Um, and I'm excited about the homes you were showing, the different, different pattern of the construction. And it, it, if it looks like the pictures of it showing us, it'll be a variety that we haven't had before. But just curious, when you did the, uh, the land, the showing the different, uh, home sites, you had different colors there. Was that just because of the, um, why I show that? Was that because of something that's meaningful? Does that mean that's the color palette for the homes? No? Okay.
So what that is, is those are, those are different, um, sizes of lots. So those are the R1-4 reduced, R1-6 reduced, and then phase three is just, it's highlighted in more of a broad scale because there's, um, there's some opportunity there for either cluster homes or attached homes.
Okay.
So that's just basically showing you land designations, which I think really brings this project a step up from Sundias Farms.
Absolutely.
Because the lot diversity is more defined here.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. I like the idea that you're going to maintain some of the landscaping. Um, I think that's, it's gonna be helpful to us. So I'm excited. I know you all are. So, any more discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Well, let's go to the ordinance. Will the city clerks please read ordinance number 2020-1480 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2020-1480, conditionally rezoning approximately 153.66 acres of property located at the northwest corner of Australia Parkway and Elwood Street, known as Avion at Ballpark Village, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-aberrangement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance number 2020-1480? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
A second? I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second for Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion? I think we've really had the discussion. We're all smiling, we're all happy about this. A roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, our number 18, next public hearing item to consider adopting the District at Civic Square Planned Area Development Overlay. I'm opening the public hearing, and Christian Williams is staying with us for this presentation. Christian?
Be here for a couple minutes.
Yes.
So I'm here with you with a request from, from Wendy Riddell to conduct a rezoning on a property within the city. The property is approximately 9.3 acres, and it is located east of the northeast corner of Monta Vista Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. So you'll see that on the map with the red box and the star right south of Encanto. Uh, the property is currently zoned PAD under the Goodyear Planned Regional Center Commercial PAD. Zooming in a little closer, you can see that the project is north of the Market at Australia Falls. It is, is adjacent to the Bullard Wash Park. It is south of Evolution at Australia Falls, which you might remember being called Live Goodyear. And it is just across the Bullard Wash from the future residential that will be a part of Civic Square at Australia Falls. West of the project is the Roosevelt Irrigation District RID Canal and a C2 Commercial Center, which we're gonna talk to on the next item. I'll also point out that this property is more than 1,000 feet from the nearest single-family residential development in Palm Valley Phase Eight North. As it relates to the general plan land use, the project falls in the business and commerce area. I will point out that Evolution at Australia Falls and the residential developments under construction right now at Civic Square at Australia Falls are also within this general plan land use designation. The project also is in within close proximity to Transit Orient Development, uh, overlay, as well as in close proximity to the Village Center Overlay District. For a little history on the property, the project was initially zoned as part of the Goodyear Planned Regional Center Planned Area Development Commercial Uses back in 2000. Much of the northern and western portions of that PAD have now been rezoned to be included in the Civic Square at Australia Falls PAD. This project seeks to rezone this portion of the PAD to allow for a transition from the commercial uses to the west and south, to medium and high-density residential to the north and east. You may also recall that the site was brought before you for discussion back in 2019 with a use permit for a mini storage. That proposal has not come to fruition, and the parcel remains vacant to this day. The basis for the zoning is the city's MF24, which typically permits 24 units, uh, per acre. I will highlight some of the major changes that are proposed within this PAD overlay. This PAD overlay proposes the allowance for 39 units per acre. This allows for the development of a proposed 352-unit apartment complex. This mix proposes four studio units, 174 one-bedroom units, and 174 two-bedroom units. In addition, while height does not equate to stories, the PAD proposes a height limit of 60 feet, which would allow the developer to construct three and four-story buildings on the property. With a currently allotted 40-foot height limit in MF24, it would not be easy to construct a three- or four-story building with the height of ceilings that luxury units often afford their residents, and the densities being requested would not easily be attained. Additional modifications were made to setbacks, parking, design, and how the building interfaces with the street to create a walkable urban environment, and I will highlight those items on the next slide. Setbacks have been reduced along the front side of the complex, which is Monta Vista Road, uh, to allow for a more urban and walkable feel. All units which have a patio on the first floor or street side will have a gate which allows them direct access to Monta Vista and easier walkability to the future Civic Square at Australia Falls area. Units on the east side, which are adjacent to Bullard Wash, will also feature a patio with direct gate access to a path which will be bordered on the Bullard Wash Park. Setbacks on the west and north have been reduced as they back to existing multifamily, the Evolutions at, uh, Australia Falls, and the Roosevelt Irrigation District Canal, which runs behind that two-story and one-story commercial center on Pebble Creek. Parking in this development will be provided via a mix of garages, tandem parking in front of garages, covered parking, open parking areas, and tandem open parking. The developer is requesting 1.5 spaces for the two-bedroom units as opposed to two. The developer has found that in their communities, not all two-bedroom units have two tenants or two vehicles. A lot of people use home offices these days. In order to provide the city with some assurances as it relates to parking, though, they will provide a parking management plan to the city, which will be approved as part of the site plan. And an example of a tandem space in front of a private gar- garage can be seen in the upper left. As it relates to amenities, the developer will build a minimum of a 9,500-square-foot clubhouse, a resort-style pool, shade areas, a dog park, and wash station, fitness center, outdoor barbecue, and a turf area. An example of a pool area can be seen above in the upper center depiction picture with seating and grass area surrounding that resort-style pool. Additionally, in order to ensure the buildings are visually interesting, architecturally unique, and do not appear, um, just like a huge cookie cutter giant apartment building, the developer will have to provide at least four color options, as well as provide other features to provide visual interest on the buildings. As you can see from the image on the bottom, the building has various base colors and vertical elements, staggered roof lines and treatments, which makes the buildings appear to be several buildings next to one another. I would call it more rowhouse feel, as opposed to one giant apartment building repeating over the site over and over again. This gives visual character from the streetscape and park perspectives. The park side perspective can be seen at the image on the upper right. This will set the design of this complex apart from those we generally see in Goodyear today. It will bring a sense of urban arrival to the Civic Square and Australia Falls Village Center area of the city. And staff has evaluated the impacts of this proposed zoning on the greater community. With no major concerns being found, staff recommends council approve the rezoning of this property from Goodyear Planned Regional Center Commercial Planned Area Development to District at Civic Square Planned Area Development Overlay, which includes multifamily uses, a density of 39 units per acre, modified development standards, and design enhancements subject to the staff report stipulations. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. My question is, is anybody from the Kaplan Development here tonight?
They are, yes.
Would they like to speak? Oh, I see her coming up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Wendy Riddell with the Law Firm, Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. I'm gonna see perhaps if I'm as lucky as Mr. Bull was tonight, and, uh, just answer any questions that you may have.
Well, we really appreciate that, and, uh, we'll call you forth if they have a question. We won't make you stand there for the entire time, but if they do, we'll call you forward, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Or if you hear something that isn't quite right, then you, you come forward and Christian will...
I will pop up.
Help you, okay?
Thank you.
All right, great. So are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2020-2103 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2020-2103 declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled Legal Description and Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number 20-02A and District at Civic Square Planned Area Development Overlay.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve Resolution 2020-2103? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Keno and a second for Vice Mayor Stiff. Open for council discussion? Councilman Pizzillo?
Can you go back to the slide with the multiple color?
Yes, sir.
Hold it right there. Yeah, I really like that idea. We get a lot of apartment complexes that use the grays or the tans. They're all the same, and, and to tell you the truth, I know the eyes and, uh, beauties in the eyes of the beholder, but I really like the fact that you're mixing it up, you know, as far as the visuals are concerned. The question I have is your upper left. Is that gonna be any part, or is that just something that you're showing us that kind of breaks it up a little bit with some stone or something along those around the garages? I think Wendy's...
The upper left, so...
I might be able to help on this one. Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, that's actually from a different project. We just took a photograph to show you how the parking worked, so...
Yeah, I, I just, I, I like the variety of colors. You know, I, I, I just think it would be nice if somehow you can mix some other pieces of the facade in there just to kind of separate it up, if that's possible. You know, I, I, I do like the upper left, what you had there. I realize it's a different project, but, you know, other than just colors, if, if there's possible that you can slip some things in there to just to break up the feel of the facade, that's all. I, I like the fact that you got the multi-colors in there and the way it looks like more row homes, 'cause it's breaking, how, how, how some of that is set up, which makes it nice, it's not just one straight thing, but anything that you can do to, uh, add a little more character and separation would, would, would be appreciated.
And I'll point out one thing, just to make sure I didn't confuse you with that image. So that image is just to show the parking. That would be on the backside of the building, so the public wouldn't really see that back of house. But that back of the building will match in character what you're seeing down there on the bottom and the one in the upper right. That's the, that's the plan we have proposed right now, and those stipulations about having different vertical elements and features, that's stipulated to get you a building that looks more like what you see on the bottom and the right.
Okay.
Not the one on the upper left.
Okay. And, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Campbell?
Um, I don't know if it's appropriate, 'cause we're just setting up the district, the development overlay, that's all. But the Bullard Wash, when you were talking about, um, that they would have access to go into the wash, and I just wanna be sure that early on, we have these conversations, that there is plenty of drainage there, so that there's not a lot of water standing and it floods like it did in Pebble Creek. So that's, I, I don't know how we took care of Bullard Wash, how we built it, but that's something that if the developer needs to take care of, or us, whatever, we need to work in concert with that, so we don't have another issue. And I'm assuming because of the design of the property, the only heat going in or out is just gonna be on Monta Vista.
Correct. So they will have their main entrance literally north of the Cal Ranch entrance. That's the proposed main entrance. They'll also have an emergency access, both on the Monta Vista.
Right, and have this gone through fire, or they...
Fire, we, so this is just the zoning process. We're also, um, looking at the site plan as well. So fire will make sure that it meets the separation requirements, or that they'll mitigate in other ways. And just as it relates to, um, water, when this project develops, they'll be responsible for making sure that their flooding is maintained and all that on their property.
Okay, but it's just not, it's not necessarily on their property, Christian, because it'll be down into the wash, is what I'm saying, so it's gonna take both of us, just like...
Got it.
Yeah. And then my last question is, um, is there any discussion at all that there would be retail on the bottom floors of these, or it's just strictly going to be residential, where people are going to actually live?
There has not. So this will just be residential. The difference that you might notice with this residential, though, is that we've tried to activate the street level so it's not just, you know, four-foot patios. People will be able to walk out of their patios right onto Monte Vista. And you know, that's going to be about an eighth of a mile or less to our district at Civic Square, which will have lots of retail.
Okay. I have not seen what they have built elsewhere, but a couple of weeks ago I was in Texas and went through an area where they had development exactly like this. And there was nothing for sale. It was absolutely occupied. And people were walking all over and bicycling and walking their dog. It was not necessarily a children's area because these were working professional in this particular area, but it was extremely successful. And people want to live like that. So that's very exciting. I can't wait to, I hope they're able to develop it in my lifetime. I'd like to see it done. So would the mayor.
We have other purposes here.
We both would. So thank you, Christian. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Kano.
Well, we're getting a lot of different projects with different parking requirements. And I think we're starting to get used to it that not everybody has two cars and a two-bedroom. But I just want to be sure that we have adequate guest parking because there wouldn't be any on-street parking there.
Absolutely. And the way the city ensures that is through that parking management plan that they'll provide with the site plan on how they plan to manage and monitor that.
Okay. And this looks like it's not fenced in. So most apartments have security gates and this is just an open complex.
So it is gated at the entrance, but if you live on the first floor along the park or Monte Vista, you can go from your private dwelling unit on the first floor to the street. But the apartment complex will be gated and there'll be a wall along the Evolutions at Estrella Falls already has a wall, but along the canal there will also be a wall. So it'll be secure.
Well, I know that we're trying to create a urban vibe around our new downtown. So I do support the increased density for this project. I don't know that I would for every project, but I think it's appropriate for this. So I think it's a good addition. Happy to see that rather than the mini storage. And so, thank you.
Councilmember Hampton.
Yeah, I also appreciate you bringing this to us. And I think the area would probably appreciate this versus the mini storage. I had a question on the height as well. Is, what is this height compared to other apartment-type multifamily in our city?
Great question. So this apartment would be more in line with what the apartment you see at the ballpark village area right now, so the clubhouse. It's going to be more in line with that. What I will say is, when this was zoned mixed-use commercial, if someone wanted to put an office building or hotel there, it would, it could be 60-foot in height. So this building is comparable, what they're requesting is comparable to a building that could be at the same height in another, with its current zoning.
Okay, and then is Liv the same, around the same size? Or is it, would be significantly taller or?
So Liv, I don't have the exact height of Liv, but Liv is a three-story building in some areas. This one will be four. So if you think about a tiering effect from the north where you're having, you know, more of a single family, you're transitioning now to Liv at three, only the buildings along Monte Vista are proposed at this point. So they could do four everywhere. They're only proposing the four-story buildings right along Monte Vista. So those buildings that are four stories right now are proposed to be on the further south end of that site.
Okay. And you said that it'd be hard if they have all the amenities and luxury to even have four because of the?
What's common is that people like higher ceilings, yes.
Higher ceilings and, okay. I do like the different elevations to Joe's point as well. I think that's a, it's just great visually to have that breaking up of that as well. And the amenities package is good also. And I think it fits in this location. I don't know if I'd see this somewhere else in the city, but I like it here, so.
Yep, that was my question, so thank you.
Anyone else? All right, my time. That height, we call Gary Gelsner. So when Gary was a councilperson.
Oh, yeah.
He, during the city center, he fought for tall buildings and for the height. And so when you talk about that, if he's up there looking down, we're finally getting what his wish was. When we first talked about, just recently about, you showed all the apartment complexes and thing, you know my reaction. But, but I have to tell you, it's all reversed now. We are growing up. This is such a direction above what we've been doing. It just, it just tells you what Goodyear is all about now. We're becoming more sophisticated, more open to all the public and their likes and dislikes. So I think, I think this is going to be attractive to the younger people. I think that's going to breed, as long as we start having more entertainment the other way, attract them. But this is going to be very attractive to young people and young families. So I'm thrilled. And I'm with Councilman Pizzillo. I've been behind him, not as strongly as he, on the colors. So tonight I kind of poked him and said, you got your way. So it's really a compliment to you. So we're very, very excited about, so thank you. So I think we're ready for a roll call.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. On 19th, public hearing to consider approving Federico's at Pebble Creek use permit request for convenience use of drive-through restaurant on property zone C2 general commercial.
Mayor, Mayor, we have to do the ordinance still for the last one.
I skipped right over it, didn't I? I tell you, I do need help, don't I? I really appreciate that. Okay, let's adopt that in ordinance. Will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2020-1481 by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number 2020-1481, conditionally rezoning approximately 9.3 acres of property located east of the northeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Monte Vista Road, known as District at Civic Square, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to approve ordinance number 2020-1481? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Councilman Hampton.
Me.
I missed them all.
It was me.
It was you.
It was me.
A second from Vice Mayor Stiff and first from her, the motion. All right, we got it together. All right. Any more discussion, council? All right, let's go on a roll call.
Vice Mayor Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're on number 19. It's the final public hearing. Item to consider approving Federico's Pebble Creek use permit request for convenience use drive-through restaurant on property zone C2 general commercial. Open public hearing. Planner Christian Williams will present.
All right, I promise I'll stop talking after this last item.
Okay.
All right. So I'm here with a request from Adrian Bruseno to hear a use permit request on a property within the city. The property is approximately 0.895 acres and it is located north of the northeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Harvard Street. The property is currently zone C2 general commercial and the property is located in the vicinity of where that star is on the map. And we're just going right across the RID from where we were just at. So zooming in a little closer, you can see that the project is within an existing shopping center west of the Roosevelt Irrigation District Canal, across from Evolution at Estrella Falls, formerly Liv Goodyear, and now actually the future District at Civic Square, east of Pebble Creek Parkway from Village at Harvard Grove, those single-family rentals. And the property is in the same square mile as Estrella Falls and Civic Square at Estrella Falls. The applicant intends to develop a building with a drive-through restaurant and a retail building shell on the subject property and has submitted the subject application for a use permit. The subject property consists of 0.895 acres within the existing commercial center. The site is highlighted in teal on this map and it does not contain any commercial buildings, but it does contain some minimum parking, landscaping, and drive aisles. The center surrounding the parcel in question does have buildings with other commercial uses. The proposed 4,000-square-foot retail building will include space for the drive-through restaurant as well as space for a future C2 user. The restaurant hours of operation will be from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, local time. However, there will be no restrictions on the hours of operation within this use permit. However, deliveries from semi-trucks are prohibited from the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., and that's in accordance with the ordinance that actually established this zoning, this C2-zoned area. Site improvements will also include repainting the parking lines, adding more parking spaces, the drive-through construction, preservation of the existing utility lines, and additional landscaping. The conceptual building elevations with the use permit application convey the architectural style intended for this center. And the picture on the upper left is the front of the building that will face Pebble Creek Parkway. And the picture on the bottom right is the building as it will face north towards a vacant site within the same commercial center. It will also include a patio on the, a nice, a small outdoor patio on the north side of that building that will be covered. And in the site, and you can see those drawings there, the actual, the drive-through will wrap behind the building, so away from Pebble Creek Parkway, closer to the canal. And that's the end of my presentation. Staff has evaluated the impacts of this proposed special use permit to the greater community. And with no major concerns being found, staff recommends an approval for a use permit for a convenience use drive-through on a 0.895-acre property, zone C2 general commercial, located north and northeast of Pebble Creek Parkway and Harvard Street, subject to the stipulations found in the staff report.
Christian, is the applicant, Linda Lopez, here?
I do not believe Adrian is here.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure we gave him the opportunity.
Mayor, I do believe the applicant, there is a representative for the applicant.
Would you like to come forth and speak? All right, well, thank you for coming.
Just kidding, my bad.
Are there any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience, other than the owner, want to speak? Okay, we're going to go on my closest public hearing. Can I have a motion a second to approve the request for a use permit for the convenient use drive-through on a 0.895, 895-acre property, zone C2 general commercial, located north of northeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Harvard Street, subject to stipulations? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Go ahead.
I heard a motion. Did I hear, I heard Vice Mayor motion a second from Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Nope, yes, Councilman Campbell.
Since I'm the queen of the drive-through.
We know.
I tell you, love Federico's, they're great. But the picture you showed is brown. Is that their normal, is that the color that most of Federico's are? I thought they were more of a mustard yellow.
I've seen them various. And one thing we're balancing here is making sure it matches the existing center.
Well, just don't have it blend in so much that you don't see it there because.
Correct. And I would say this is more modern than the existing buildings.
I hope so.
And what I believe they might end up doing later is potentially updating their style. So this is going to set a new.
Who, Federico's updating their style?
No, the center that it's within might be doing some upgrades to make themselves more modern. But this is what they're proposing right now, which would modernize that center a little bit more.
Okay, as long as it looks nice and people, it'll get people's attention so it doesn't blend in with the hairdo and everything that's there because you drive by that whole area and you don't even know what's in there.
Absolutely.
Because they're all the same. So thank you. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Ms. Councilwoman Lortano?
I think it's a good plan, so again, welcome. My only question is, what we seem to have found out is when we put these drive-throughs in, they're a lot more successful. And they seem to back up more so. So is there like a contingency plan? Because we've seen it with the Culvers, we've seen it with a lot of other businesses that the drive-throughs are just, they're packed.
I think one good thing about this one is they have more than five queuing, which is kind of our minimum there. And then in addition to that, there's a long driveway that leads you in. And some of those businesses might not be there at night, for example. I mean, they might be closed at night. So there's a lot of parking in here. Another thing I'll point out is that they're providing way more parking than the minimum. So they're providing 48 spaces. I believe they only need like 23 or 28 or something. So there's going to be a lot of parking here. It's also a shared center. So I think we have some spillover room if needed.
Right. Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, kind of the same question. I don't know if it can go, if it is, I know it'll be successful. But yeah, maybe two lanes or however they do it, if there does become too much. But it looks like comes, it looks like the access comes to Harvard right there?
It does, so.
They don't go through the shopping center.
Harvard is the southern, so I'll just point out. So Harvard is down here. And this, the drive-through is going to be up here.
She'll take a right in off of Estrella there and then you'll take a right out of, sorry, onto Pebble Creek there?
Yeah, so if they want to go north, they could wrap around the building, go back to Pebble Creek Parkway and go north. If they want to go south, they could take this drive aisle down here.
To that light.
To the light and make their left turn out.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious how it's going to feel in that area. But I do like that there's something going in north filling up that, filling up that more commercial there. I know there's some more space. You said there's another pad going to be north of that?
Yes.
And that's already prepped? Or is that something that they have, that they might bring, something else?
It's just a pad site, so there's minimum improvements there. There's some parking, back of driveway. It's very similarly situated to this parcel here. So it's ready to go for another user, that C2.
Okay, but it's not for this, this user has, is not, does not own that parcel as well?
I do not believe so.
Okay. Okay. I want to bring something else too along with that.
We all do, right?
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Yeah, the only, the only thing, and I hope they, and again, I think you've addressed it, is there's enough flow for that to come in and out. Sometimes with Popeyes and the Starbucks, trying to get through that drive-through in Starbucks, it's a mess. Because there seems to be a backup, not enough for that flow to come through. As a result, unfortunately, with the COVID and whatever, there's more drive-through traffic than there is people pulling in. So just want to make sure there's enough of a leeway in through there that, you know, doesn't back up with any of the other businesses, that's all.
Councilman Kano?
Well, my question, Councilman Hampton brought up too, was the left out because of the divided road. So if you go down to where the light is, that is like one of the longest lights ever. So it's really hard to get out of that shopping center with a left turn. So that's just, it might be, look at that.
Well, I think that actually we have a light, a lot of number of lights we need to adjust. And some advanced technology, right, is going to come on all those lights. So we've talked a lot about, especially when we talked about Estrella Parkway, you know, if you have to stop at every one of them as you go, you know. And I'm not very technical, but I know that when there isn't much traffic, the light will change and it will be able, some people go through. So I think it'll all be improved. As I said, we're growing up and this will be another spot people will question, but we're going to make it, right? Yeah, okay. Have you finished? Go ahead.[1507.86] You're finished? Okay, any other questions?
Just welcome to Goodyear, so.
Pardon me?
Just welcome, I already said that.
Well, all right, before we vote, we're gonna.
I'm at my house, I can't wait.
Let's, let's go all in favor and welcome, but I wanna hear the vote for, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, welcome, welcome, we look forward to it. Okay, we're gonna go down to the business. I'd like to remind council again to wait for the motion and second before discussion. On number twenty, we have one item on business, is to consider adopting the notice of intent to increase water and wastewater rates and set the public hearing date. Finance Director Doug Sandstrom and Public Works Director Javier Sof, is he here tonight? Is Javier here?
He's here.
Oh, he's here, okay. So which director will present?
Good evening, mayor and council. Last week, council was presented with the results of the rate study that had also been presented to our Citizens Rate Committee regarding water, sewer, stormwater, and sanitation rates. Tonight's item before you is adoption of the notice of intention. The notice of intention sets the public hearing date for January fourth, twenty twenty-one, and is the official start of the public process following all state statutes. With that, I'll open up for any questions.
Thank you, are there any speaker cards? All right, would any of the audience like to speak? Can I have a motion a second to adopt a notice of intent to increase water and wastewater rates by adopting a five-year water and wastewater rate structure? And set January fourth, twenty twenty-one as the date for the public hearing on the adoption of the proposed water and wastewater rate structures? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton, a second, Councilman Keno? Open for council discussion. No discussion? All right, then let's vote for it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, thank you, Doug.
Boy, that was easy.
Wow, Doug, hit the easy button there, Doug.
All right, so I'm gonna turn this over first to the city manager, do you have anything you wanna say tonight?
I do, mayor, just, just two quick items, I wanted to recap our twenty twenty Fall Festival, which was a huge success, and it concluded after four nights on Sunday. Wanted to share some numbers, we had one thousand six hundred and thirty-two vehicles that came through.
That's amazing.
Which was over eight thousand participants. They handed out six thousand goodie bags, fifty-four hundred pumpkins, and one thousand, let me get the number right, one hundred and thirty-three thousand pieces of candy were distributed. We would like to thank our event sponsor, sponsors and volunteer groups, Right Away Disposal, Sam's Club, Mission Church, Desert Edge High School, and a special thank you to all of our staff for their hard work to put together a very creative, wonderful, and safe event for our community to enjoy during these unusual times. I also wanted to highlight our Make a Difference Day, which was on Saturday. We had over a hundred and fifty individuals who volunteered with special projects and including a food drive. Our volunteers painted a hundred and fifty fire hydrants in Pebble Creek and cleaned up parks and streets around the city. Our drive-through collection of non-perishable food items filled sixteen large food bank boxes, and it was just simply a great day, and I wanted to again thank the staff that did a phenomenal job organizing the special event. Thank you.
Well, thank you, council, do you have any comments, commendation, or reports of current events or requests or future items?
Yes.
Councilman St, Vice Mayor Stiff?
We've got a special event coming up on Wednesday that, I'm assuming we're gonna have some role in as a, as a city from a public safety perspective, from looking at the manager.
That's a perfect question to ask, because we have the correct information, because the public is misinterpreting things in a great way, so this is a good time to clarify it.
Certainly, and thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. This is not a City of Goodyear event, which is the rally that would be taking place on Wednesday at the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, however, very, very much impacted, you know, by the event, and so we are working with the, the private event. And actually, Dan Cotterman is our, our lead on this project. And they are looking to rent space, for example, for parking at the ballpark, and they were, are following all the traditional rules and expenses associated with that, and also coordinating with our fire marshal and would pay those associated fees for the setup and making sure the event is safe, and then public safety as we would for any other large event coming to our community.
It's basically public safety is taking care of our streets for the traffic, right?
Correct, there's traffic control involved, and I don't know if Dan wants to add anything, but the, we have a team that has accumulated very quickly, and they've met, I think, a few times today, we'll be meeting a few times again tomorrow to make sure that it's a safe event for our community.
And could you just address, we have gotten some emails from people who object to what's going on, and they think that the city has control, or, you know, over, over the event.
Certainly, so this is a, a private event, which is protected by the First Amendment. There was no permission needed from the City of Goodyear. They, they simply have, you know, the right to, you know, to hold this rally. But again, our residents, our community is impacted, so we're doing everything we can to work with the event to make sure those impacts are mitigated.
Any questions, Vice Mayor?
Still have two more. So what I'd like at the very end of this is a detailed accounting of what expenses the city went through, what we incurred for all of our expenses, and if we billed for them, and then if they've been paid. I'd like to get that noted kind of in the public record. Secondly, have we identified a First Amendment demonstration area? And has that information been made public? Do we have a demonstration area established? There's usually, usually a First Amendment area set.
We have someone addressing it.
So I'll, I'll attempt to answer that, we are still actively planning for this event, that began in earnest today. And we have discussed the potential for First Amendment areas for potential protesters and others together. So that is on our radar and something that we are working to address.
So to prevent it from happening everywhere, can we at least make that a pub, make that publicly known as soon as we can as well, so we don't have, if there are protests, we don't have protests everywhere that we at least can get it into, into the proper area to create any havoc that, that might ensue, I don't know, but.
Certainly.
And once we have the traffic control plans, we'll also be sharing those on social media, so that our local businesses who have shift changes, you know, again, least disruption possible, try to get as much information out to our community as possible.
Great, thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Brandon.
I imagine with that, like, with the other, I think with the event that was at the Oui Guam, it's more of a regional, maybe because they're, they were bringing people back and forth through airports, but it wasn't just our police department or Avondale's Police Department, it was, there was police officers from the region that were there supporting, so I assume that'll be the same.
It is a regional coordinated event, especially starting with Secret Service, Phoenix PD.
Because remember, the airport belongs to Phoenix, okay, it's not Goodyear's ownership.
I'm, I'm just making sure it's aware that the whole burden's not gonna be on the City of Goodyear for the publics, that it's gonna be a region, a regional event, so, and it's, and all these questions are important, because we've never had anything like this in Goodyear, so. This is our first time, so I'm not sure there's OE out there, but Arizona as a whole haven't had, had this much exposure or attention, so.
Yes, and if I can, I'll try to do it from memory, give a shout out to some of our neighboring communities who have offered assistance. Surprise, Peoria, Buckeye, Avondale, I know I'm missing some, but they're, they're all stepping up to help.
And I think the security of knowing to our citizens that we're not using city funds for this event, it is political. And we are nonpartisan in the council, we're elected in that position. So I'm glad that we're paying attention to that, so people will feel calm about this, because it can draw a lot of people, and I'm sure he will. I do feel that we ought to be sure we're putting out there, wear your mask, in any way that we can do that. I would hate to see several people leave there with it. Yes, go ahead, Brandon.
I'm not sure how big it's gonna be, but I'm curious if like, we should learn from Avondale how they do PIR? I mean, the road signs, like, I don't know, direct traffic throughout our whole city.
Well, I've already got requests from somebody from Avondale that wants to know about the parking. And so you can see the interest is starting, so it'll be more than Goodyear there.
Yeah, just, I just imagine, I remember, I mean, I saw pictures of people driving from all over the valley just go to Prescott, so I imagine there'll be people from all over.
With flags and trucks and everything.
Coming to Goodyear.
You can expect that.
So we treat it like a football game or something like that, where people know where they're, where to go easily.
You'll think it's homecoming.
Yeah, where people know where you can easily go, just to make it easy for everybody. I'm already telling my people in my community to stay, don't drive anywhere during that time period, because it'll probably be pretty busy.
Well, we just want everybody safe, you know, and, and those that wanna be there treated well, so. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, mayor, I'm sorry, I'd like to just thank the ballpark staff and Park and Rec for the great spooky night. I drove it, the mayor was behind me. We, we did really well, they told us to turn our lights off and we're driving in the dark. I've never done that before, that's pretty scary. And someone, yeah, someone jumped out and yelled boo at me, and I about had a heart attack, because it was a real person. I thought it was a mummy. Yeah, but they did a wonderful job, I just, just the innovative way that they put it together and the lights and the music and the spooky stuff, it was so much fun. And I could hear kids in front of me just squealing, because they were having so much fun. Oh, yeah, I asked if you were gonna be there, because I was gonna get behind you and your kids, but it was just a wonderful night, so. Thank you to all the park and recreation people and to the ballpark staff, they did an incredible job. They just, every, every time they put on an event, they outdo themselves.
Yeah, they do.
And we're just so proud of them and we're so grateful to them, and I love my little pumpkin.
So creative, so creative.
So thank you all.
The mayor jumped too, and then, and you know, there was one of them that was so mechanical, I thought, no, this is just, and they came at me, and I was screaming in the car, so it was realistic, so.
It was great, it was wonderful.
Any other comments before I dismiss this meeting? All right, the next meeting will be a work session on November second, twenty twenty. Already into November, can you believe it? Oh my God, there being no further business to discuss, this meeting's adjourned.